Problem is, there's only that one little almond.
Yeah.
It needs at least two.
You're right.
Ha ha. They should call it almond deluxe. How you doing?
Good.
Good. That's okay.
Yeah. Um. Oh, I don't know.
Oh. Real bubbly.
I think she was in here earlier. She's an older woman, a small.
Which is real bubbly. She decorated her house so much.
Oh.
It's nice to see you with the kids. Really nice people in there. They're nice to you. I have.
Oh.
Here she is in the back row. On the left.
Uh huh.
I can't see her, just by how I can see her.
We've got the whole crowd today.
Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting for January sixteenth, twenty twenty four. If you would please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Reports from state and county officials. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Are we on? There we are. Okay. I love it when he gets up there and tells us to use the outside voices here. All right. Uh, first of all, uh, there's in light of this two A county and all that stuff, we're doing a class, me and Brent Winters, he's a common law attorney. He's out of Illinois. We'll be doing an online class starting February first. And it's on this little booklet here. I'll pass it around so you can take a look at it, but I do need this one back. And just basically covering the four clauses of the militia that's in the Constitution because the two A it starts out with a well-regulated militia. We tend to forget that part of it. So, uh, we're doing that class at twelve weeks. We're starting eleven o'clock in the morning and, uh, we'll go to about twelve thirty, one o'clock's around that ballpark. So, February first. February first.
February first.
Yes. So just an educational thing, not recruiting by any stretch of the imagination, just want the public to understand what that means. So. All right. December stats for law enforcement. Uh, we logged six hundred and ninety-six complaints in the month of December. Twenty-five individuals were arrested. There were a hundred and fourteen accidents. Seventy-two involved deer. Two involved alcohol or was drug related. Four hundred and seventy-four criminal histories were run for warrant entry and warrant request. Seventy-five sex offenders were processed. Three hundred and two pistol licenses were processed. Incidents handled, uh, going back five years, uh, six hundred and ninety-six in two thousand and eighteen, you handled six hundred and sixty-three. Uh, and accidents handled a hundred and fourteen in twenty twenty-three, two thousand and eighteen was a hundred and five. Car deer accidents, uh, twenty twenty-three is seventy-two, two thousand and eighteen was seventy-three. Arrests, twenty-five in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and eighteen, sixty-five. And then, uh, alcohol and drug related arrests, six in twenty twenty-three, and in two thousand and eighteen there was thirteen. And the corrections. Uh, we booked in a hundred and twenty-two persons into jail the month of December and released a hundred and fifteen back into the community. Daily average population was sixty-four persons. Staff has transported forty-four inmates to and from various locations, include court, medical facilities and other counties. In addition, we fingerprinted sixty-one persons at the front counter. Kitchen staff prepared five thousand five hundred and seventy-two meals at the cost of two dollars and sixty-seven cents a meal. Uh, bookings, um, twenty twenty-three was a hundred and twenty, twenty, a hundred and twenty-two, uh, two thousand and eighteen was three hundred and fourteen. Uh, releases, a hundred and fifteen in twenty twenty-three, two thousand and eighteen, two hundred and forty-two. Daily average population, twenty twenty-three is sixty-four and two thousand and eighteen was ninety-three. Transports forty-four compared to seventy in two thousand and eighteen. Public prints was sixty-one in twenty twenty-three and two thousand and eighteen was forty-seven. Meals served, uh, five thousand five hundred and seventy-two compared to eight thousand four hundred and three at a dollar forty-eight a meal in two thousand and eighteen. Any questions?
The only question I was, and I asked, um, under Sheriff Sixberry that is our average daily population was hovering right around fifty. And now it's bumped to sixty-four. Is that a trend or is that just a little anomaly for the moment?
It went down because it made a lot of changes in laws and, uh, I don't know. I guess we'll have to ask the judge. I think he's starting to sentence more people. Uh, yeah, we're getting a lot of weekenders, but really I, there's nothing I'm really worried about right now. So, okay. Yeah.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, February fourteenth, when the new law goes into effect, gun restriction, um, not gun restrictions, but when you have to have a purchase permit, is that gonna put added burden on the sheriff department?
Of course it is.
I mean,
Yeah.
I mean, how much burden you think?
We don't know yet.
And I don't think a lot of people are aware of this. Don't you agree?
Usually by now we've had some type of breakdown on these laws that are coming through and I've received, I haven't received anything yet. I usually get them through the state somehow and, uh, I, I don't know, I'm kind of referring to it now as their big secret. I'm not sure what we need to enforce, uh, yet. So I don't have any good answers for you. I've yet to see a breakdown of these laws.
Additional questions for the sheriff? John?
When you do get a breakdown and you come up here, will you inform us?
Sure. I'll, yeah, I'd be happy to. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Additional reports or information for state and county officers or officials? Moving ahead, public comment, limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Buried in there somewhere.
Never sat down there. I've always had to stand. So, um. John Lake Irving Township, I passed out to you guys, um, the minutes from the executive committee, um, that was in March of last year. Um, there's been some question at two different townships, um, with regards to some of the stuff that we're putting out. In this minute, in the minutes here, it lists the commissioners were at that meeting that voted for the two-way resolution that we put forth back in March. And it was Commissioner Tuneson, Commissioner Hatfield, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Smelker, and I believe that was, there was.
That was it.
Right? So, um, anyway, to clear up anything, those four were there and they voted with us unanimously. We also had state representative, state senate representative, Tom Selbert at that meeting. So to clear up anything with regards to the commissioners not being there, not being in support of that resolution is false. Also stated in there, Commissioner Jackson said, change can be good. The Board of Commissioners is trying to create a culture that is more open, relaxed and nonjudgmental. There are benefits to having a unified front from the GOP and the community leaders. He likes the resolutions being produced and that we are being the leader of them. I just want to make that point with regards to the Second Amendment. I can speak to you on, it's House Bill forty-one thirty A. I can't remember the public act now. But you're exactly right. A non-CPL holder, starting February fourteenth, will be required to go get a license to buy any long gun, any weapon for that matter, the sheriff's office. A CPL holder wishing to buy a firearm from any private individual will also need to go to get a purchasing license to buy that firearm. If you want to talk, I've got a lot, all the information I didn't bring with me today with regards to these laws, but what's gonna be happening here real soon, it's gonna affect a lot. It's gonna make common criminals out of good law-abiding, um, firearm owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
I just grabbed the handrail around to you guys so you can take a look at it. Oh, wait, wait, hold on, I am.
Yeah.
Hello, Gary White, Berry County. Uh, I just put a piece of paper out there. There's no sense in me giving you every, every one, one, because quite often the information I get is ignored, give, is ignored. Uh, the lawyers oath, State Bar of Michigan, I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution, uh, of the state of Michigan. At your last meeting, well, actually, a township meeting that was attended, Bruce, announced that the county commissioners were going to be going into or have the attorneys here talking about solar. Well, it was important. So you had a group of people that are interested in solar come here and after about fifteen minutes, you folks went into closed session. Does it make you for a very open governing body or transparent governing body? My understanding, they sat here for about an hour and twenty minutes, hour and a half, something like that, came out and there was really nothing said. The oaths of office are taken by numerous one because, you know, I don't remember the exact way to put this, because lawyers take the oath of office, they are, uh, officers of the court. That may not be the exact correct term, but they have to deal with the court. When you came out, you could have made a statement validating that, I don't know, there's an overreach of state government on the Constitution, taking away government, you know, local government rights. But you came out and said nothing. At this point in time, you're still saying nothing. There is a responsibility that you uphold the Constitution or support the Constitution. The attorneys need to support the Constitution. You need to come out and make a blanket statement that either of these laws you're trying to comply with, which is what I believe they're going to try to get you to do or work around. Well, how do you say it? If you're complying with them, you're agreeing with them, then you're not supporting the Constitution and you're not supporting the townships, the people of Berry County. So I guess that is my deepest concern at this point in time, that this oath of office is on a piece of paper and people put their hand up and they say it, they repeat it, but they don't follow through with it. Transparency, incredibly important. Here shortly, you're going to go into, once again, the organizational meeting was at the last meeting. was at the last meeting. Now you're already updating your rules. Well, I've said that the cow is a broken piece of equipment, which you people are using. You're proving everything I say, but you're not fixing it and getting rid of it, but you're taking one step closer to showing me that I was correct in that, and it needs to be gone. So I'll be back on that.
Thank you, Gary. Additional public comment?
Good morning. Joel Libetson, Woodland Township. This isn't going to be a popular thing for me to say, but I'm going to say it. I know that a lot of the things that you guys offer us are a privilege to us. I guess that's the way that the law sees it. And I've said on numerous occasions that I believe that the rules that this board had over the past few years that I've been attending these meetings have been the best rules that allow for the most public input of any governing body that I have ever attended. And I've commended you all for maintaining those rules in spite of some hairy situations. I'm going to ask that you put the rules back to the way they were. I understand why you changed them. I can't blame you for changing them because certain people have taken it upon themselves to exploit those rules rather than to utilize them for the betterment of the county. So if you would, please consider that. And might I recommend, as I've done before, that when you hear someone come up here and exploit the rules in such a way that maybe they're trying to state things aren't that are, or perhaps say that information wasn't available when it's available on page 85 of the packet, just say, "Thanks for your comment," and move on. Today's packet, I've read through it. It's 25 pages, and I really don't have any issue with anything. I don't have anything to add with what you're doing today, but if you would, please, just grin and bear some of the comment, because you all know, I've talked to virtually almost all of you, and you all know my positions on a lot of this. Just please put the rules back to the way they were, and just grin and bear when it comes to that. So you have my support on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment?
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Vicky Beatty. I'm from Irving Township, and I just have a request that may or may not be something you can help me with. I was trying to use the community room at the Titan Center to do some classes on a monthly basis about civics, and I was told that only elected officials are allowed to reserve that room. And I said, "Well, I am an elected precinct delegate," and they said that wasn't good enough. So I'm just wondering if someone could look into that and let me know if I might be able to use that room in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. We will. We'll make a note of that and discuss that with administration. Additional public comment? Hearing none. We'll move ahead with our agenda. Marilyn Smith, resolution and request for public hearing to apply for CDBG housing grant.
It's a perfect name for today. It's called the CHIL grant, which is Community Development Block, Community Development Block Grant, Housing Initiatives, Local Livability, which is a lot of words. Fortunately, MISTHA was reverted, CDBG was reverted to MISTHA in October, on October 1st.
Marilyn, would you pull that microphone a little closer to you?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. CDBG was reverted to, back to MISTHA from MEDC, and so housing became a priority for them again. This is the first time that we've been able to even have a grant. We've had program income that we've been able to utilize for home improvements throughout the county as needed, but it's limited. The grant is limited also, but it's an opportunity, and there may be future ones. The one that we're requesting is for $200,000. It is across Berry County. We included every community within the unincorporated and incorporated zoning areas. So we can't go into extended rural areas, but we can with our program income. So we're requesting a public hearing. It was a really fast process. We had only from, we had, the letter of intent had to go out on December 8th, required to be in by midnight on December 8th. We have until February 13th to submit the application. We were allowed to write the application because the letter of intent simply said, "Those that are eligible to write the application have to submit the letter of intent, and we'll let you know." As of now, they've indicated that we would be funded as long as we supply all of the information that they need by February 12th at midnight, which, of course, we hope will be a lot earlier than that. So we're requesting a public hearing. There are some other documents that will have to come forward. At the public hearing, I may or may not have some of those available, and that's where we are. There's a limit of $40,000 per house. We're hoping to collaborate the way we've done in the past with rural development and Habitat. Rural developments, our funds are still held hostage by the budget, so we're hoping that that will be resolved soon. And with, as I said, Habitat, and then, of course, the Department of Health and Human Services has emergency money that we can contribute towards, and this time we can use Community Action Agency money also for weatherization. This is a wonderful grant. This is the best grant that MISTHA's had in over 20 years. It is a forgivable at $10,000 and under, and it is a five-year forgivable over $10,000.
Okay. Marilyn, have we done these in the past?
Grants or?
Yeah, these particular grants, the CHIL grant, or is this the first time?
The CHIL grant is the very first grant.
Okay.
It's the second one in a round. Apparently, they had one in November that really didn't get a lot of publicity. Then they sent it out, and we decided to apply for it, and we have the opportunity to get it at this point.
So at this point, they've confirmed that the $200,000 is available for you, or is it still in process?
Well, everything is in process until it's stamped by the MISTHA organization and the governor, and notified of the public officials, but they said everybody, that we have the opportunity to be funded as long as we supply all of the information for the grant application, which we're going to be doing, obviously.
Okay. And then how do people in our rural communities, how will they know about this, or know that this money is available?
Well, we'll send-
How do they apply for this?
Yes, they have to apply. They have to be income-qualified. For Berry County, a single person right now for this particular year was $42,000, a little bit over $42,000. But that's just for a single person. It isn't, it isn't double for two people. It's around $50,000 for two people in a household. It's based on household income. And so even if they're not related, if they're living in the same household, we have to count that. The letters of intent, the letter of intent had to include letters of support, and every community provided a letter of support for that letter of intent. So Middleville, Nashville, Dalton, and Hickory Corners, Freeport, they all supplied letters of intent, so their officials know that this program is going, and will certainly promote it.
Okay. If you have 100 people apply for $200,000?
First come, first served. It's always been first come, first served, first ready.
First come, first served, first ready.
And need is important, of course, but we do have program income money when there's enough money by people paying back previous loans. This one will not supply program income. We can use program income to supplement, but it won't supply program income because it is forgivable loan.
Okay. Awesome. Questions from commissioners?
Which is really important.
Morning, Marilyn. Does it include just exterior, interior?
It's exterior and interior, but not cosmetic.
Okay, so water heaters, furnaces?
Yep, yes. Water heaters, furnaces.
Windows, roofs.
Can be flooring, which we can't do with program income. It can, roofs are also allowed. Siding is allowed, especially because we have lead rules that are going to have to be involved. We'll have to do lead assessments. We are not required to do radon, but if somebody does have a problem, because we're, Berry County is not in a radon-eligible, or I don't want to say eligible, but radon-affected area. So it is an opportunity to expand what we've had in the past for program income, because program income is emergency-only. That's critical need to help safety in the house.
Okay. Additional questions? Catherine?
Can you further explain the forgiveness of the loan? You said $10,000?
Yes. $10,000 is immediately forgiven. Right now, with program income, it's $2,499. There's no payback at that amount. If it's $2,500, the whole thing has to be paid back. This one, I don't know the exact number yet. Again, this is kind of an evolving process. It just came out. We just sent the letter of intent on, as I said, December 8th. I was gone for a couple of weeks. Even though I was working from afar, I was still gone, and it put a little more stress on Luella because she was trying to get all of this together over the holidays, too. So there hasn't been a lot of opportunity, but generally speaking, it's like $10,000 and under. At $10,001, it's going to be a five-year forgivable.
Interesting. Would you, once the program is available and we're awarded, assuming everything goes through, will we get an update?
Oh, sure. Oh, absolutely. And we try to, as I said, try to allow it for, every community has a need. The City of Hastings has a need, too. They have a couple of different grants available to people on the east side of Hastings through the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. So there is money available in the City of Hastings for some improvements. Most of those are exterior, though. We can go interior. So it could be drywall. It could be anything that's safety issues, bringing the house up to code. That's going to be the critical issue, because if there's a house that's so deteriorated, we may be able to go in with program income and do an emergency work for a furnace, or if the roof is leaking, we can do the roof. And we've worked a lot. Habitat has been a great partner this year because they have the Brush with Kindness program. So there are a lot of different things that we'll be able to do with this grant. We'd like to keep it as low as possible to be able to extend it to as many people as possible. So the $40,000, because it is only a $200,000 grant, they only had $1 million for the whole area, our region, which included Ottawa, Alleghen. So we were fortunate to get $200,000, I think. I was sure they were going to cut it. When they didn't, I was very happy.
Thank you for staying on top of it and bringing that kind of money to Berry County.
Well, we had, it's a great opportunity, and believe me, the next one, if they come out with one, if there's more money that people haven't spent, we'll be right on top of it, too.
Awesome. Additional questions? And this request is for a public hearing next week?
Next Tuesday. It's all rushed, and I apologize for that. There hasn't been a lot of opportunity. In fact, Luella had to reprint the resolution because we had to add the environmental certifier, which is going to be you again, and that can be changed. We can change it later on, but just to make sure that we have everything covered for the application, we had a short period.
Okay. There are no further questions. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to schedule a public hearing regarding the CDBG CHIL grant application and resolution at the regular meeting of the Berry County Board of Commissioners on January 23rd, 2024, and after the public hearing to approve the resolution for the CHIL grant application and management of future grants.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to schedule a public hearing regarding the CDBG CHIL grant application and resolution at the regular meeting of the Berry County Board of Commissioners on January 23rd, 2024, after the public hearing to approve the resolution for CHIL grant and application and management of future grants. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I would be taking it to the paper, so it's in this Thursday's paper for that five-day notification time.
Awesome. Thank you, Marilyn. Good work.
Well, a lot of support over here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, Mary Bassett from Transit. Good morning, Mary.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Awesome. Good to see you.
Good to see you. I'm the new director of Berry County Transit, so it's nice to meet everyone. I'm here for the resolution of intent for 2025 and a blanket signature. So just to give you a little bit of numbers that I've been rolling with, in the last year, we gave 64,789 rides, which is 2,500 more than what we did the year before. So that's, that's a good movement. 11,341 of those were seniors. That's really important to Berry County Transit, is being able to mobilize our seniors. We currently have 12 routes that run daily. We just received two new buses in, which are 16 passengers or less, which is perfect because it enables us to hire drivers that are chauffeur. So, and that's been one of our struggles, is being able to hire drivers. On a positive note with that, we did hire three new drivers. One has full CDL, and two, we are going to train, but again, with just the chauffeurs, we can throw them in their buses and pick people up and get them to where they want to be. And we have created two same-day routes, which is something that was really important to me. Usually, we're subscription rides are people who have called the day before to pre-schedule. With these two same-day rides, people can call the same day. There's more availability, especially for the outlining areas that's harder to reach when they call the same day, and already, we're already booked up because everybody's got ahead and booked their rides. So we've opened that up, and I think that's one of the increases in our numbers, is because we are able to be more available. I've been trying to get out there and speak out into the community to get the word out, so if any of you guys know of any place I can do that, reach out to me. I've been getting out and volunteering in the food initiative up at the COA, any place that I can. So again, same thing. If you guys know of any place where I can get out there and connect with the community and really get the message out, get the word out about what we're doing, please reach out and don't hesitate. And spoke with Mr. Colton last week, so reaching out to Woodland today, I tried yesterday, but everything was closed anyway. But they're going to do flyers for us to get the message out to a Woodland area, and they have a sign where we can advertise, so we're going to be doing that. So as far as I can get, that's, that's my full goal. I'm committed to getting the message out there, because we've changed in what we do so much, where before, a long time ago, when I started working at Transit, I started off as a driver, worked up into dispatch, then operations supervisor. We were only going to certain places on certain days. We expanded that to cover Berry County all day, every day. In most places, we are over there every hour on the hour, but a lot of places, they're not aware that we can get out to them every single day, so I really need to get the word out there to, to the people who don't realize you don't have to be a senior citizen or disabled in order to ride Berry County Transit. Anybody can ride Berry County Transit. And with hopes of getting that message out, we'll increase our numbers even more by next year. We averaged about, for each route, 3.5 riders per hour, and that has increased. And part of that is coinciding with certain areas and going out to certain areas at specific times, so we're getting more people on the bus than just going back and forth. The gas prices and everything else going up, we have to be efficient with the way that we're running. We have to be smart about it. And we averaged on-time rides out of the 64,789, on-time was 93.7%, which is a really good number in consideration of the number that we were supporting. So for the year of 2023, we ran 338,832 miles. That's a lot. So the goal for the next year is to decrease those miles, but increase our passengers. You guys have any questions for me?
Questions from commissioners?
I have a comment.
Yes.
And I did speak with Mary last week. Something that excited me when we were interviewing her on the Transit Board is her desire to get more outreach into the outer areas and not be so centralized in Hastings. And so it's exciting that she's committed to that, and Woodland is already responding. They're going to let them use their electronic sign at the township, and the village has even said they'll mail. And the big message is Transit- And the big message is Transit is for everyone. Some people think it's only for seniors, it's only for disabled. No, it's for everyone. And in my work in Nashville as a chiropractor, I'm stunned at how many people do not have transportation, do not have a car or a ride, and don't know that this service is available. But it's there, and it's for everyone, and it's cheap. I think your most expensive price is three dollars.
It is, yeah. I always tell people we have the best rates in town. So for, if it's under five miles, general passengers are two dollars, senior citizens are a dollar. Anything over five miles for general rides is three dollars. Senior citizen and disabled are a dollar fifty. And we get people all the time who have moved into this county, and they've, they've rode with the Grand Rapids or other Transits, and they're really shot at our prices. And we have yet, for as long as I've been there, I've been there for, going on fourteen years, we have never raised our prices. We don't intend to.
Yep.
We're there for the community.
There was a passenger who went all the way from Woodland, one of the northeast corner of the county, all the way to Dalton, and the southwest corner of the county, three bucks. You couldn't drive it for that, even unless you rode a bicycle. Thank you.
Additional questions?
Morning.
Good morning.
So going forward with the Commission on Aging, if we, if it is built out there, you're confident that we're going to be able to work out something to reassure seniors that we're going to be able to get them there?
I already have plans rolling through my head. I'm not going to divulge them right now because I'd probably get myself into trouble. But I do. I'm already thinking, thinking ahead for when that comes up, things that, stuff that we can take to make sure that we assist them and get it out there in any way we can.
Yeah, because that's a big concern for a lot of seniors, so. And I know you've been thinking about this, so I just wanted to bring that to the forefront.
And I think that's the benefit, you know, being operations supervisor before taking over as director. I know, I know what it needs in order for it to run efficiently. So I already have the ideas rolling in my heads and what routes we could utilize in order to accommodate that.
Great. Thank you.
Additional questions? Mark.
Did you say that you're available on Sundays as well?
We are not. We are currently still closed on the weekend.
That's what I wondered, because I thought you said every day of the week, but.
Five, five days a week.
There, there is a, I mean, I know that there are problems with this request, but there are a substantial number of people who would benefit from having a safe way to get to church services on Sunday mornings.
At some point, that's probably something that I've already been thinking about it because we used to do Saturdays. And just after COVID hit, everything just shut down. And then we run into, just like everybody else, the lack of drivers, the lack of workers. And so my hope is by getting in more drivers, the three drivers in the last three months, that's substantial because in the last couple of years, we've hired maybe two or three. So that's a big deal. So the more people we can get to come in and work, then the more we'll be able to expand our services. I can't ever guarantee Sunday, but I won't put it off the table either.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay. Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners adoption of Resolution twenty-four dash oh five, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Resolution of intent to apply for state formula operating assistance under Act Fifty-One of Public Acts of nineteen fifty-one as amended, to name Transportation Director Mary Basset as the official representative for all public transportation matters, who is authorized to provide such information as deemed necessary by the State Transportation Commission or Department for its administration of Act Fifty-One, and to sign and execute all agreements and documents.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Colton, support by Smelker, to recommend of the board of commissioners adoption of Resolution twenty-four dash oh five, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Resolution of intent to apply for state formula operating assistance under Act Fifty-One of the Public Acts of nineteen fifty-one as amended, and to name Transportation Director Mary Basset as the official representative for all public transportation matters, who is authorized to provide such information as deemed necessary by the State Transportation Commission or Department for its administration of Act Fifty-One, and to sign and execute all documents and agreements. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. You guys have a great day.
You, too.
Next up, discussion of establishing a personnel committee, basically expanding on our board rules. Michael, I have talked about this off and on for the past six or eight months. There are several retirements, and I think it was in two thousand and eight when they changed and went to the Committee of the Whole. So before, I was actually a commissioner. So they've used this format before in the committee structure. With retirements pending, such as the gentleman in front of us, Mr. Brown, it seemed like a good time to rethink what we're doing with personnel, to kind of take this. Personnel committee would be responsible for several things, but give us a chance to look more granularly at situations in the county with hiring, with people we appoint on boards, just a number of different things. So I don't know, Michael, you want to lead, or you want to start on that as far as what the Personnel Committee has done in the past and where you see it moving forward with this?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So when I first came, we had standing committees. A number of them, I think there were four or five, broken up to oversee departments in to Chairman Jackson's comment. Then in the early two thousands, then Commissioner Bob Houtman introduced the Committee of the Whole structure. The, it was being utilized in Kalamazoo, where he was familiar with. We moved to the Committee of the Whole. Some of the purpose of the Committee of the Whole was to address some complexity, maybe confusion, if you may, that comes with multiple standing committees. I'm not trying to advocate one way or the other, but do bring to the table nearly thirty years of kind of history. And to Dave's point, with, with this being my last year, pass some of that on. But one of the issues that came out of having multiple standing committees is moving things through them and keeping aboard everybody apprised. So I'll expound just a minute and then get back on track, if you may. But you, particularly as it goes to personnel and finance, everything is personnel and finance related. So it started in one committee and then had to go to another committee. And you were moving it through multiple, or if there was an item that didn't have a committee, it didn't need to go to finance or personnel. But when it got to the board, only three or four members, depending on that committee, were familiar with it. And the others either voted on it with no information, or you effectively had to rediscuss it. So not saying it's better or worse, but that was part of the reason that the Committee of the Whole, that everybody then was on the same page. And the reason that it didn't go directly to a board meeting, but went from a committee, we went to the Committee of the Whole and then the board, is that it allowed for the opportunity to have discussion. If something wasn't prepared, or a department brought something to the board that wasn't developed enough, that the board wanted more information, they could push it back and say, we need to, we want more information on this. It also gave then an opportunity for the board to have that discussion, for it arguably be printed in the newspaper, the public to have some input on, or at least see what was going on, before then the board acted on it. We had certain times that an item was acted on by the board, and then the public would read it and say, wait a minute, we have input disagreement. You'd have to undo it, so under the Committee of the Whole. This doesn't completely undo the Committee of the Whole structure. All it does is brings to the table a standing committee, that being the Personnel and Human Services Standing Committee. I think the thought with Commissioner or Chairman Jackson is that, again, as we have some significant, and I say we, effectively the board, the county, some significant personnel decisions coming up. The recruitment, the advertisement or solicitation and recruitment of my position this year, there are some department heads. We have some elected officials. Not that you have authority over that, but, but it brings to the table a committee that would meet more regularly to maybe work on those items and help guide the board through that process on a, maybe on a little more intimate is the only word I can use, more detailed level than, than what we have had in the past. The proposal is outlined, or the specifics of the proposal are outlined on pages, I think it begins on eleven, beginning on page eleven. The language is significantly taken from what the board rules that were in place prior to going to the Committee of the Whole. So I think I cleaned it up a little bit, but you'll see that item E just enumerates that there will be one standing committee, that being the, that will be appointed by the chairperson of the board with the confirmation of the full board. The structure of it will consist of four members. The areas of responsibility are outlined. You can, and may want to either take away some of the responsibilities, or you may want to add to that. I tried to do my best to think through what areas might exist. And then talks a bit about the procedures. The, it's anticipated that the committee will consist, again, of four members, which is not a quorum of the board, however, that the standing committee will be subject to the Open Meetings Act. So we would keep minutes. We would post those meetings. They would be held in open public unless there is some matter under the Open Meetings Act in public law that allows the board or this committee to go into a closed session. It would be an open meeting. And that unless the, the board delegates some authority to this committee, one item, for example, would be the Grievance Board. The functions of the Grievance Board or Grievance Committee would be absorbed or part of the Personnel and Human Services Committee. Most of you probably aren't familiar, aren't aware of that. I think that's a good thing. It means we haven't had any grievances that have risen to the requirement of needing your review and approval, your decision or adjudication. But it's included in all of our bargaining agreements, that if an issue can't be resolved at the, for lack of a term, administrative or elected official department head level, that it, before it goes to arbitration, that it goes in front of the Grievance Committee. We've been able to handle those and, and address those over the years amicably. So we do, from time to time, have them come to the Grievance Committee. But that would be an item that the bargaining agreement, which has been approved by the county board, effectively creating a policy that says that if there is an item that makes its way to the Grievance Committee, that in this case, the Personnel and Human Services Committee would address. And they would address, that would be approved at that level. It would not go on to the full board of commissioners. But items that aren't otherwise enumerated in another policy, giving the board authority, would then go on to the, I would presume anyways, on to the Committee of the Whole and then to the full board. You may want to redirect that, that they go directly to the full board. You can, that's up to you. But so this establishes one standing committee, not the full cadre of standing committees that, that we used to have. If you're interested in discussing that, I can get more information on that. But that's sort of a nutshell of what this, what this does or its purpose.
Okay. And just to reiterate, it's not an ad hoc committee. This is a standing committee that's subject to the Opens Meetings Act. So the meeting times will be posted, minutes will be taken, minutes will be approved either through the Cow or directly through the Board of Commissioners, whatever the case is like that going forward.
That's correct. And that's a good point, that it is a permanent standing committee. It will not be an ad hoc committee that has, and if you're not familiar, what our board rules say as an ad hoc committee, that they are established for a purpose. Once that purpose is completed, that they automatically dissolve, and the board then reestablishes another ad hoc committee or like, this will not be that. This will be a permanent standing committee, as long as that continues in the board rules.
And my recommendation is at this point, because this Personnel Committee will take over some of the functions of the Grievance Board, or all of them, even though they are limited, that at this point, that is myself, Commissioner Getty and Commissioner Colton, and in talking with Commissioner Hatfield, he has agreed that he would also chair that if you guys are willing to serve on that committee for starting out for this year. Is that a yes, a maybe? We have to establish a meeting time for that, but that is my recommendation at this point, that the Grievance Board members of Colton, Getty, Jackson, and Hatfield start with that committee.
That would make sense.
And move forward with that. And we've got a little work to figure out between the four of us what the best meeting time would be. Keep in mind, we'll be doing interviews for various boards throughout. So there'll be, there'll be some work to be done here, but I think it'll allow us to interview people and talk to people in a little calmer environment, maybe a little less intimidating environment, and talk to people about some of the, just intimacies of those boards and what they do and what we're expecting. So questions for Michael?
I have a.
Yes.
Yeah, I respectfully disagree with this. Okay, twelve years ago, when I was chair, we had standing committees. And so what we would do, sometimes there was a subject that everyone wanted in on, and then we would do more of an ad hoc committee of the whole for those kinds of things. But with this present, if you're going to go, you know, Bob Houtman did this, went to the Cow completely. And that way, we all get to hear everything. But the fact that you have to have a standing committee for personnel, that you had to have an ad hoc committee for buildings and grounds, that you have to have a separate Grievance Committee, these, to me, are all, show weakness of the Committee of the Whole structure. And I would like to at least have discussion on considering going back to what we had when I was chair of these standing committees and then having Committee of the Whole, ad hoc Committee of the Wholes. It's kind of inside-out and backwards, but, but it worked at that time, although Mike didn't think so.
Please don't, don't mistake. I appreciate that, but I'm familiar, and it's what I've worked under. And I think there's pros and cons to both. I, I am trying to help just say, here's what, and that is a risk of, of being here for thirty years, right? I have seen things done, and, and they've been changed, and they've been changed maybe because the board didn't feel that they worked. And the risk I have is that not influencing to a point now and saying, well, we tried that and it didn't work. That's not my role. My role is to help you figure out what you want, what structure you want, and based on what I know, can we, at least you go into it with your eyes wide open, and can we learn, expand upon that or learn upon that? We, we're in our stride administratively and understand the Committee of the Whole. There will be some challenges if we go to a complete committee, or a multiple committees, but, but that's not for us to, to decide. I mean, that, please. We'll, we'll figure that out, and we'll share with you, and I'll try to do my best to share upfront what I see those weaknesses, or not weakness, the challenges will be. But that's, this is your, for you to, this is your structure. And, and if that's what you feel you need to best govern, I'll help you figure out how to do that. So I, I know that your comment was not, I don't take offense to your comment, but, but I did feel it important, I apologize, to, to express that I'm here to help you figure out what you need for the. out how, what you need for the aid of you to best govern, not what's most convenient for administration, if you may.
And the reason we started with personnel was just that we see the challenges in personnel and a need to have some focus on, you know, just human resources and personnel at this time. There has been discussion on going back to a committee structure, you know, at some point, and what was there, three committees, four committees?
I think, and at one time, there were as many as five. There would have been Personnel and Human Services, Finance, Central Services, County Development and Facilities and Property, if I remember, right? Luel is shaking her head that, yep, I got lucky, a blind squirrel, right?
Was that a, oh no, or a?
That's, so, no, she was saying, yep, that, that was the correct, yeah, the correct number. So I think there were five, pretty sure there were five at the time.
Okay. And so I'm not opposed to, to thinking about that, I just think it would be better to start small and work our way into it and see how this fits into the whole board. And if the board goes, hey, this Personnel and Human Services is working well, let's dissolve the Building and Grounds ad hoc committee and roll that into a standing committee, which is also, you know, again, subject to open meetings, and then maybe look at, you know, another committee or a finance, whatever the case is, and go. So to completely change the structure right now would be a little dramatic, but I'm not close-minded about discussing that going forward, so.
When you had a committee structure, did you still meet four times a month? So you had BOC twice a month and, and the committees would, would meet in, in the interim?
Yeah, I, if I remember right, yes, the Board of Commissioners met twice a month, that second and fourth, I think it was Tuesday still. The committees, if one of them met more than, they, they only met once a month unless the finance and it was, okay, Luel is confirming that, that my memory was correct there too, that Finance met twice a month. So you had Finance twice a month, the Board twice a month, and then Committees were once a month.
Okay. Commissioner Hatfield?
I generally support what Commissioner Colton is, is saying, but I also recognize that we have to get to work on some significant issues that would become the responsibility of this Personnel Committee, and therefore, I really think that what you said makes a lot of sense. We move ahead with this, but we don't forget to come back and look at the broader issue of revamping Cow versus other standing committees. So I think it's important that we get the Personnel Committee in place and start to address some of the issues that we know are out there.
Commissioner Campbell?
I would like to hear a little more from Commissioner Colton, so, you know, he's been there, done that type deal, so he has some knowledge on how it worked and stuff, so I would like to see a little more about what he's done as we proceed with this, how it was handled.
Okay. Commissioner Tennyson?
I think we all can foresee we're gonna have some major challenges. For one thing, we don't know how many hats that man right there sitting in that chair actually wears. Okay, so I mean, moving forward with this, I think it's crucial that we get moving on the personnel end of this, because we're gonna have a lot of challenges. There's a lot of people walking on here with tons of knowledge. A year from now, it's gonna look a lot different than what it does now. So we need to move forward quickly with this.
Commissioner Doster?
When I served on this board previously, we were under a full standing committee structure. I thought that it worked fairly well at that point. The key to it was very good minutes that were sent out very soon after the meeting so that the other commissioners could read, go through your mailbox, read all the minutes so that you didn't feel like you're blindsided at the regular board meeting, because you already had this condensed argument basically as to what they thought was a good idea, and that if you didn't agree with it, you could research and you could still put your, your two cents in. I thought it worked well. It, you know, over the years, there were threads that frayed on, on the, the process, and I think it was abandoned to think that, that something else might work. I'm perfectly willing to accept this as an immediate, intermediary step. I think this is a good start. The next committee might be Finance or Property, because those are two big items which would not necessarily be covered with this. I did want to bring up, Michael, I did have a little discussion with you previously on Article 7, number 10, the language on page 12 there. I don't know if some of that language is necessary. It was apparently taken out of the old bylaws or structure of the, this bit about the three unnoticed absences or unapproved absences or that of, it seems rather punitive, and I don't know that it's necessary. You already have a board that does its duty, shows up, shows up on time. It gets so cumbersome to determine what this really means, who has the ability to, to excuse an absence, did it, was it done on time, was it, was it done for a good enough purpose, was it, you know? And then you can still, and the, the language here, and then even after this occurs, the board chairman may remove the person. It doesn't even compel the, the removal, so it's all, so I'm wondering if...
Speculative.
Yeah, it's, perhaps if just the first sentence of 10 was allowed to stand and maybe the rest of it scratched.
I would, real quickly, I have no issue with that and make some sense, a couple of things that I didn't think about as I pulled that language and brought it in. Of course, commissioners can't be removed from this board or as committee of the whole. You just don't have the ability to do that yourself. So with a committee, I think Mark makes a valid point, that you start to get into unexcused absences and excused, and that seemed to be early in my career, a, a thing that was focused on, and I think all of us as we look at boards don't concern so much with, with that topic. And I'm not sure that the first sentence needs to be there either.
I don't either, I don't know that it does.
Well, I think it's covered on page six. It talks about general rules for commissioners and commissioner attendants, and it already does say that they're expected, or you're expected to attend meetings as scheduled and be punctual, and if you can't, to notify the chairperson of the board and the administrator's office in advance of the meeting. I can't say that I've, over my recent career anyways, and maybe entire career, had any significant issues with, with commissioners. You know, there are times that things happen that you just don't show up and, but we're all in that spot and know that, you know, we do our best, particularly with the communication that we have now. It, it doesn't take much, so I would have no problem removing that in item number 10.
Okay. Commissioner Smolko?
Would this committee be just like our, kinda like our other committees, and the chair appoints them every year who's on it? And that would be your annual?
That would be my understanding, so.
It is.
And where you annually replace somebody that don't show up?
Yeah, yeah. I agree with Mark, I don't think number 10 needs to be in there. So I think we can strike that from the board rules, if there's consensus on that.
And if that wasn't clear, John, yes, the, the chair would, would recommend and the board, pardon me, the board would then confirm the appointment of the four members to this commission, committee on an annual basis.
Additional questions? Question? Gary?
Yeah. When it comes to that, you know, your ad hoc committee has been busted out, if your meetings are paying for the doors, you're not being as public, all, should all these committees not be underneath the Open Meetings Act publishing? You know, the other thing you wanna consider is you remove the elected officials' compensation board. You need a board to take that one over also, and you're not, elected officials aren't really personnel, like it's sort of a statement, so you really need to have that board in place. You should really, if you're going to look at this, set a timeline of when you're gonna look at this structure, two months down the road, so it's not lost in the source, if that makes sense. If you don't set a timeline, it's, well, we're just gonna sort of see what happens. But the, the structure as a governing body, you wanna be open to the public. When, Michael talked about, well, it could go on paper or Cow, and then it could come back. Well, three commissioners met and talked about eliminating the ability for the public to pull something off the consent agenda. Well, based on what he just said, that should never really have happened, because that was public's opportunity, you know, to pull something back off. So there's good reason, there wasn't a lot of research done. Now more research has been brought in. The structure of committees should be done all public and not ad hoc committees that say, well, we're above the Open Meetings Act, or we don't have to follow the Open Meetings Act. You can make all these adjustments right now and set that timeline to revisit it, because if you don't set the timeline, there's a good chance it's going to slip on by, so, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Larry, sorry about that.
If you have the agenda, if you look at Article 10, Section 10, you talked about removing something from the bylaws.
Michael, can we just, can we strike item 10 from the agenda request? Does it need to be an amended agenda request, or can we just strike that out?
No, that's the, that's the, I guess, the purpose of the committee of the whole is to have this discussion, and then based on your discussion, we will modify the final, actually, the, the motion would remain the same, I, I believe, but the document will be changed. So what goes to the final Board of Commissioners for approval, if you choose, would not include item 10. So if, if everybody's in consensus, then you just, it's a consensus and you direct me as administration to make that change to the final set of board rules that go. If, if you were having disagreement and it looked like, then you'd take a vote on that specific issue to determine if, if in fact the board wanted to or not. But based on the conversation I'm hearing relating to item 10, removing that, I'm not hearing anybody saying I disagree with that. So because it's not a final action, you could just, at consensus, say, yep, we're, we're all in agreement that that will come out of there for the document that goes to the full board, if that makes sense.
Okay. John?
Can this committee do anything without bringing the final back to this board and being voted on?
No.
Can I, can I correct that? That's a good spot to start from. You know, it, it assumes that this board doesn't have any, however, again, with the grievance committee, there is a policy effectively through your board, your bargaining agreement, since the Board of Commissioners has adopted the collective bargaining agreement, and the collective bargaining agreement says that the grievance board will adjudicate grievances that rise to that level, and you've assigned that now responsibility to Personnel and Human Services, that they can make that final determination without having to go to the board. I will, I, I was commenting, as Commissioner Doster was doing some homework related to this, this item before the meeting, was asking some questions, I, I said, we'll have to do a little research to figure out if there are any other items, but as an example, you have delegated certain things to administration, right? We can make purchases up to a certain threshold without having to come to the Board of Commissioners. And that is, you have that right to do as long as that decision has been granted in open session and, and there's a policy. So we'll have to take a, a deeper dive, and some of those we may learn along the way, but unless there is a, a policy, and, and if that's the case there is, we'll communicate that as we roll this committee, this standing committee out. But unless there is a policy, it will then go, I assume, unless the board wants it otherwise, through the committee of the whole and then to the Board of Commissioners. But that would be something that is administration. I guess I'd need some clarification that I hadn't thought, thought about to today, unless you want it to bypass the committee of the whole and go directly to the board.
Probably would depend on what's being discussed, but I think with appointments to boards, that if that committee is gonna interview candidates for various boards and commissions throughout the county, and then they're gonna make a recommendation, I would think they would make a recommendation directly to the board versus making it to the committee of the whole and then making it to the Board of Commissioners. But other things that are more detailed, that would require some discussion, I think it would behoove us to run it through the committee first. That way the public gets input, we get full discussion on it, so. David?
Just given what you just said about the grievance committee, should that be spelled out in here? Because we refer to collective bargaining grievances as one of the things that the committee shall be responsible to the Board of Commissioners for. So should we specifically reference what's being delegated to this committee that's covered by the current grievance committee? I'm agreeing with what you're trying to do. I just want to make sure that it's covered in here correctly.
I'm, if you're okay, I'm comfortable, it does reference collective bargaining grievances. And if you tie that back to the collective bargaining agreement, the collective bargaining agreement enumerates or, or spells out what authority relative, what decision-making authority relative to a grievance exists. So I think that...
It's okay.
I think it ties back. From, from my perspective administratively, it does. I have a, a clear level to say, yeah, here's what would go, what constitutes a grievance and a decision that, or the grievance board now, now the Personnel and Human Services would have to adjudicate, if you may.
John?
Under committee procedures, I see number eight, that a record, written record will be, be minutes. Are we giving Cindy another meeting she has to go to?
I hope so.
We actually...
We have to discuss, we have to discuss.
That is a, a point that yet needs to be discussed. Cindy and I are gonna have to, don't quote this, arm wrestle, I guess, a little bit to, to figure out. In the past, administration has, has done the, had done the committee minutes. Neither of us, we, we're both trying to figure out time-wise, and that is something to, that we're gonna have to grapple with, particularly if we look to multiple standing committees. But, but we, that we haven't completely addressed at this point, but I will certainly be there and at, at the outset, I have to maintain minutes. So I've done, I, I do them for the airport board, so I, we'll, we'll keep minutes.
Okay.
Bob is next.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Then on the minutes, then, in this Personnel Committee, someone takes the minutes and then gets them out to us so we can read them?
Yes.
So does that mean that you people will okay the minutes before you leave that meeting? I don't want un...
Yeah, no, what would, I, I assume that it would be like any other, so the airport board, for example, I take the minutes, they do get posted, and then the board approves them at their next meeting. So there is that?
So they, we'd be getting the unapproval?
You would be getting unapprovements, and that's the case for any committee that we, right now, that we have. There, there are a draft set of minutes for everybody's There, there are a draft set of minutes for everybody's review, and then at the next meeting, you approve them. So, um, there is a chance, yes, that, that the minutes could be, um, slightly different once they're approved. We've changed them, um, with others, but I anticipate it being similar to, I, I think back of other committees and that, those changes that occur aren't generally hugely substantive. I mean, I don't know that it's been a problem. And if there is, it's just a discussion that, that occurs.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the discussion and the input. I think this is moving us in a good direction, especially with personnel and human services, and I look forward to the discussion on other standing committees going forward.
And before you, if you're finished with that part of it, there is one other minor change to the rules that I want to point out, and that's, uh, on page four-
Okay.
Um, under order of business, um, the, um, the order of business for your Board of Commissioners meeting agenda is spelled out in your board rules. Previously, um, reports from state and county officials was, occurred after limited public comment. Um, we have adjusted the board rules so that the reports from state and county officials now occurs prior to, um, we, we all have already done that with the committee of the whole agenda, as you'll remember, you asked to have that added to committee of the whole agenda. We didn't have to adjust it in the board rules for the committee of the whole because we don't spell out the specifics of the agenda for the committee of the whole in your board rules. But since the board rules specify the agenda, um, uh, for the Board of Commissioners, and then you'll notice that, or may notice that previously it said county officers, we've changed that to officials. And the reason that we've changed that is that, um, there's been discussion about officer having, you know, you've heard that term and, and it's specific to certain individuals. I don't think it's the intent that it's only elect, only, um, intended for county officers. An official might be, for example, a staff member of a department. If a department can't be here, a department had or elected official, they might send a staff member. There's still an official here to make a report, um, it just-
Clarification.
For clarification purposes. And then it makes it consistent across both this document and our, uh, committee of the whole agenda.
That makes sense?
This has already been approved. We don't have to vote on it to write it in here correctly, right?
Uh, we are adjusting that, the order of it.
Yes, number-
You don't need a motion or anything, right? It's already been-
That's, I think it's included-
It's included in the, yeah, on Item 4, it's highlighted. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware. So if you don't want to make that change, we'd have to adjust this document. Right now, what I'm hearing is just take out Item number 10.
Correct. All right. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the attached amended Berry County Board of Commissioner rules and procedures and regulations to establish a Personnel and Human Services Standing Committee. Motion by Getty, support by Hatfield, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the attached amended Berry County Board of Commissioners rules and procedures and regulations to establish a Personnel and Servi, Human Services Committee. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, noted.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Let me take five.
Yeah, you want to take a break? Okay. At the request, the board will stay in a recess for five minutes.
The board will come back in session, um, at this time, public comment, limited public comment. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
I'll try to make a loud enough for you. Gary White, as we saw that on your agenda, it talked about board rule changes. You made two board rule changes today. When I brought things up to consider, there was absolutely zero conversation by eight commissioners. Michael Brown brought the second thing up. Oh, then, okay, we're going to do two of, two changes. One was not on the agenda, but in reality, your board rules were on the agenda. It was opened up for any and all possible amendments. To not make any considerations for timeframes, to not make any considerations to ad hoc, to not make any considerations for a, uh, election compensation committee, or at least have conversations on. I heard some, I seen some heads nod when I said it, but this was your opportunity to show that you listened to the public. I think it's pretty obvious you don't, because you have your minds made up, what you're going to do, who you're going to listen to, and why you're going to listen to them. I don't like that person. I'll show him I have the authority to ignore. So once again, it's incredibly important. You had the opportunity to change board rules, make amendments, have discussion on the other ones. Uh, even Joel said he should go back to the old rules. That never came up. But you had that opportunity because you were on board rules. So, Health Department, once again, quite a topic. Uh, at your last Health Department in December, I'm not sure how many of you heard, but they approved two more positions. So now you're up to nine new positions in the Health Department over the last, what, about a year and a half or less than two years? It seems like there's a employee problem at the Health Department. It would say that, well, the one's already going to be running in Eaton County, but they're going to have to work on doing something for Berry County. The way I heard it is the Berry County Mental Health had, uh, denied wanting that person, that body. So the person on the health boards, not the health board, but the Health Department, well, we're working on getting something in over there. Berry County with this Health Department is always the last in line to be worked on. Why? Because, well, Eaton County will take anything and everything we get. Health resource, school resource advocates, they were already in place here in Berry County before the Health Department took them on. I don't like the idea, well, the one comment. Well, if we don't take that funding, our neighbor, our county neighbor might take that funding. Maybe that county neighbor needs that funding. We don't necessarily have to grab every dollar and put somebody to work that really doesn't have a job because, well, guess what? There's not there, 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 not work there. All right. So I appreciate not being listened to.
Additional public comment?
Good morning, Joel of Surrattland Township. Hopefully, one of the things that you look at with your reorganizing is the pay and retirement age for deputies and corrections officers. Our sheriff is sitting right there. I'm sure he'd be glad to talk to all of you on that. Again, fifty-nine and a half, too old to be out, no offense, but, uh, you know, they, they should have the opportunity to retire before that-
Come on.
Yeah. As to, uh, um, uh, Michael Brown, uh, I find it somewhat tragically ironic that the board has all the gray hair and he doesn't. I don't know how he managed to escape from that. I thank him for what he's done for the county, and you guys have a tall order to fill his shoes. Um- I have other things I wanna say. I'm gonna save those for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment? Hearing none. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Tunison?
Couple things. Regarding the wind and solar, you know, this has been thrown in our lap, too. This is all new to us. So, we need to get educated, and that's why we're gonna have this public forum. I'm sure the chairman's gonna speak on that, but, uh, that way you can hear the same things we are, and you can make a determination, just like we have to make a call on this, so. One other thing, there's gonna be a countywide employee get-to-know-party-type thing at the Waldorf Friday night. All the commissioners are invited, anybody from the county. Five o'clock at the Waldorf, five to six, there's a happy hour-type thing. The meal's at six o'clock, and I don't think there's any time when it ends, but hopefully, everybody can join there. Sarah Vandenberg's worked awful hard on it, so wanted to mention that.
So, any employee of the county can attend?
Yep.
I think there was a, like, for dinner-
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars. Okay.
Per. And you can either contact Sarah personally or through email, let her know you're coming, or you can just show up on Friday night.
Pay at the door?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes. Commissioner Campbell asking for forgiveness today. I represent four townships at a couple of the- Thank you.
Sorry.
I represent four townships at a couple of them. The issue came up of a meeting where four commissioners voted to support an article. I said back that, I didn't, I didn't recall that happening. It was pertaining to the Second Amendment resolution. And I said that at a couple of different counties, and then I find out today that they were talking about a different meeting, and I was talking about the BLC meeting. So, I just wanted to clarify that. I will also clarify that with my townships. I only was aware of what actually went down here at our meetings, and what was in our records, and what the votes were here at the BLC, and in no way was I knowledgeable about what the votes were someplace else at another, another meeting. So, just trying to clarify it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatfield?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Doster?
I took my photograph of the spongy moths that I showed the board here at the last meeting to the Conservation District Board, which I also serve on. And apparently, the idea of spraying is, is really no, kinda, I guess, no longer an option. They determined that that spraying did other collateral damage, especially to the butterfly population.
Pollinators, yeah.
And pollinators, and so that's something that they're really not looking at anymore as, as a way to control this. It's, from the information that they have, they believe that the cycle is gonna continue for another two years of getting progressively worse. It has a lot to do, apparently, with how wet the spring is. If you have a wet spring, it creates another fungus or something that can attack them to help keep the population under control. We've had a couple dry springs, and it's one reason that they think that they're proliferate, proliferated so much at this point. But I, I think at some point, they're gonna send somebody here to make a little presentation to the board, talk about it further.
Always good, thank you. Commissioner Colton?
No comment.
Mr. Gay?
Nothing.
Commissioner Smoker?
I'm good, thank you. Just a few notes. In conversations with Michael after our meeting last week, the Performing Arts Center in Hastings is available February thirteenth. That is a Tuesday night. That would be a workshop, special meeting for us. So, that would be at 6:00 PM at the Performing Arts Center. We need to put that application in, so if you have a schedule conflict or something that doesn't work, please let me know. That workshop is gonna be with both Jim McManus, Planning and Zoning, and with our attorney to talk about what we can and can't do with solar and wind, where it is with the state, what our options are. We've just continued to learn about this, so this'll be open to the public, all townships. We want as much citizen participation as possible. There will be an opportunity for public comment, but I think it's important that we all get on the same page so everybody knows exactly what our options are, what we can and what we can't do. And it's, it's detailed, so I think it'll be helpful to hear it right from the attorney as far as what our options are and what we can do going forward. And then it's also important to hear public input as far as what's happening in those districts because although the project right now is primarily centered, you know, in the southern part of the county or the western part of the county, one of the things that Mr. McManus had pointed out was that there are phone calls coming in. I think he said fourteen of the sixteen different townships have had people calling and requesting, so it's not just a Johnstown issue that we're addressing. You're looking at protecting farmland and people in the entire county. So, I think that'll be a very valuable workshop right now, February thirteenth, 6:00 PM. So, like I said, that'll be with our attorney, with Planning and Zoning. There'll be some Q and A opportunity as well. Any questions? My compliments to the grounds crew. It was very easy to get around. They're doing a fine job. And the road crews, the Berry County Road Commission. I know a lot of us are driving from distance, and I didn't have any problem getting around. So, roads are in great shape. And, go Lions. Unbelievable. We got Michigan as a national champion. We got the Lions working on it. Three o'clock on Sunday for our next game, so let's see what we can pull off. If we can do it, two for this year would be great, so. We appreciate you guys braving the weather and coming out and spending some time with us this morning. We look forward to seeing you next week. Thank you. We are joined.